All right, I'd like to call the order. Town of East Troy Plant Commission for the month of, excuse me, August. Let the record show that all the commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Gordon, who is relieved by Commissioner Nielsen. Thank you. So how we work is we work on a split meeting format. Tonight is our informational meeting where we'll have the applicant come up, present what they're looking for, give their explanation. The board will ask questions of them, back and forth. We will then have a short discussion amongst commissioners, and then at that point we would open it up to the audience, to anybody who would like to speak in favor of the proposal, then anybody who would like to speak against the proposal, if necessary, a short rebuttal from the applicant. We then adjourn for two weeks and come back, do our research, come back in two weeks and make our decision. That being said, that's not by ordinance, so if we feel it's a straightforward decision we can make tonight, we will make it tonight. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the plant commission minutes from July 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 9th Planning Commission meeting minutes as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a variance, N 8728 Wilmers Point Road, parcel PWW 00013, David and Nisha Burns. If you could come up and...
All right, well, first of all, I want to thank all of you here on the board. I, in the past, have been on two terms of zoning board of appeals and one high school school board term as well, so I understand the time and effort you guys are doing and serving the community, so appreciate that. Go to the next slide. So in terms of, what I want to go through is, I know this has been in your packet, but just wanted to take you through kind of the project description, the current status of the house, kind of the expected outcome of what we plan to do with the project, and then talk through a little bit of the three-step process, or the three-step test. Okay. Well, if you could go right back real quick. There you go. So the project description's pretty straightforward. One, we want to rebuild our deck and stairway with the same footprint. We are going to reduce a little bit of the footprint based on the second piece to have zero impervious surface impact, but more or less we want to be able to replace the existing deck and stairway. The second part of the project is to extend the deck on the east side just a little bit to create a space where we can sit outside without having any issues with egress or entry in a safe way. So in a current, and this is what you see right there, you can see the location of the stairs off to the bottom left. That's where you can enter the garage to the bottom left. I wish I had a little pointer. But it's the bottom left, there's a landing where you get into the garage, then you go down to our main level where our kitchen, living room, family room, dining area is, and there's a landing at the bottom of that first stairs on the left side. That's the way you enter into the house. Then there's a walkway to go around the house to the east side, assuming north is pointing upwards, to be able to enter in French doors on the lake side on that east side. There's also a way to take the stairs down to the lower level, it's a ground level, for which you can then enter into the, we'll say, the basement. So that's what the house, that's the footprint, and that's where the project is going to happen. So this is just a visual look of this. The top left is the stairs that come down from the garage and the driveway, coming down to the front door, if you will, to go into our main level. You can see on the picture to the right, that's the walkway to go down to the east wall and enter those French doors on the lake side, and then going down the stairway to the main, I'm sorry, to the lower level, our basement. And then the left side picture is where you see how it wraps around and provides access to the French doors going onto the east side, main level. Okay. You know, the current status of this is that the deck is significantly deteriorating. These are tough pictures to really get to the details, but the posts that are holding up, holding it up, are deteriorating toward, like, at the land level. We don't know if there's concrete underneath it, so we don't know how much rotting is happening below it. The railings and the decking themselves are having a hard time even staying on. In fact, just this weekend, my son told me the next morning he had the tread just sitting on it, where the tread came off, and the reason these are coming off is because the joists underneath it and the stringers are rotting. And so in order for me to fix this, I have to add extra wood to it, next to it, to have something to screw in and actually hold on. Same thing with the railings. So that's the intention of replacing the deck. It's just, you'll see that there's some limitations of that based on the footprint. So go into the next one, please. So that's part of the project. The other current status of this now is that you can see where the deck has not been extended, and from a visual perspective, there's no splitting up of anything from a vertical scale perspective. It's just one big tall thing, and that walkway is really only from those doors to get around the house and exit, or entry. So go ahead. The next page is what to expect of the project. You can see where the deck has been moved all the way to the north side, the north and east corner. We're planning to use composite decking to be more sustainable and to be maintainable. We're going to have cables as instead of balusters to try to limit how visual that is. We're trying to have the least amount of material to be looking at, so we're going to go with cables, but otherwise, it's going to be the same, same look and feel, with the exception of the extension. Go ahead. So going to the three-step process from unique properties limitations, it's really what it is, is the footprint, the existing footprint. When we purchased it, we didn't know about the 75-foot shoreline setback issue. We found out shortly thereafter, after we bought it, and we wanted to put stoops. There was no stoops on that lower level. They were just doors to get out, but we had no stoops, and when we wanted to put the stoops in a little utility shed, we had to go through this variance process 12 years ago. So we learned then, but we'd already purchased the house. And so with this footprint, we of course are well inside that 75 feet, and there are a few parts of the stairway that are inside the three-foot setback from that southern neighbor. So given that footprint, we're just very, very limited in terms of what we can do to get around this from both rebuilding a staircase, we can't just rebuild it as it is due to this, and we have no way to add anything where we can sit down within these limitations without really tearing down part of our house. It's just the footprint is kind of different. So this just gives you a sense of where those things are. You can see that we're 58 feet away, as was built by the owner, who had built this out. On the circle to the right, and then the circles on the bottom are just showing the issues there of the setback to the neighbor. I think one is 2.2 and the other is, you know, two, two feet or so, something like that, but that's where we're having issues with just being able to rebuild the deck and stairway with very, again, I don't know how else we'd be able to get to those locations of the building without that staircase or trying to move it somewhere else. Go ahead, Jen. Okay, so unnecessary hardships. The hardship here is we really have nowhere to sit outside. We can go on the deck and stand and look, but to just sit down and enjoy the view of our yard and the lake, we can't really do that, because if we put seats within anywhere on that, on that walkway, because of the size of it, it would be a hindrance, it would not be safe for egress. And I just dropped off my mom and my dad. They both have walkers, they're here for a family reunion this weekend, and there's no way we could put any chairs in there and then safely be able to navigate around on that, on that place. So that's a hardship, that we really don't have anywhere to sit out of the main level, and it's just impractical, and it would be crazy burdensome to like, tear down part of the building to be able to do this. So that would be hardship. Go ahead. So just to give you a sense, that's where, it's just pointing out where, where that egress is. If you needed to get out those doors, you can't put any chairs on that part of the walkway, because you wouldn't be able to get out safely. Next, please. Okay. No harm to public interest. As we consider the visibility to our neighbor's house where we're extending the deck and potentially creating somewhere where we could look into their yard more, we have a window directly adjacent to where that deck would be extended, and there's a picture right after this, where you're not able to see anything new that you would if you were on that deck. And I can tell you what my intentions are, but I don't think that's going to make anything work. I have no intention of looking at it, but practically speaking, from a geometry perspective, if this is where the deck is, the window's about like this, looking exactly at the same thing, and I think I've got some pictures of that. In addition, that there's a bedroom that we would be able to look into. It's probably about 35 feet away. What we are, is the second bullet, is we're adjacent to the neighbor's detached garage. So unless somebody's really trying to deal with having our viewing into their garage, which I don't think there's any windows, that would be a problem, but if there isn't. From a public interest perspective, we believe that extending the deck is actually an improvement from a visual appeal perspective, and actually could, could increase their property value next door to them by not having this thing that's just so vertically, you know, it just seems big. We want to split it up, we want it to be architecturally look better for them, and hopefully improve their property value as well. And then the other thing, from a no harm perspective, is we're removing, built landing at the ground level, which, when they built this thing out, it's a huge layered landing with steps going on all parts. We're going to remove that landing, and with the code, we can just make it a stairway that goes down the ground level instead. And we're also taking away some of the bump outs on the walkway. If you see some of those pictures, it kind of comes out a little bit, and then goes in and comes out. We're going to make it straight across, we're actually taking away that impervious surface, because the deck is considered impervious surface. So we're going to take away some of that to actually make it just a bit, it's not a lot, but we're making it a little smaller, so that net-net, even with making this extension, there's no net change of impervious surface. It's net zero. So we're not trying to, to add anything, it's just moving impervious surface from one thing to another. I think that's it. So these are the pictures, so it gives you a sense of the window on the left side. You can see the window right next to it, and I don't know if you used the updated one, Jen, but that's okay if you didn't, that's fine.
This is the email I just opened.
Oh, it is? Okay, great, so maybe it's there. You can see the garage on the right side, and there's the window up there. Let's see if you go to the next one. Yeah, and so from the water, you can see the distance from the window, and you can actually see the window on the left. How far that window is away from the actual window that we'd be looking through, and how that window is right next to where the deck extension would be. Go ahead. And the one on the left is the view from the deck extension location. I was up on a ladder, so it's not exactly the same, you know, angle, I just didn't want to go too much higher, but that's right on the corner, looking into that window, and on the right side, that's the view from the adjacent window right next to it. So I, you know, I'm sure they don't want to have a deck near to them, but from a visibility and privacy perspective, I don't think there's a whole lot of harm. And also from the majority, their view is not going to be looking that way, their view is going to be looking absolutely. Any, I think there's, let's see if there's anything on? No? Thank you again, really appreciate your service.
So I kind of see this as two separate items. The stairs, you're basically building, rebuilding them as they are actually a little bit smaller. You're within the side yard setback, which is probably why you're here, but you're not getting any bigger, you're not going any closer to the neighbor. And then the other, obviously, is the extension of the deck. Yes, it's in the 75-foot high-water setback, you're not going any closer to the lake, you're not going any, well, yes, you're going closer to your neighbor, but you're not in your side yard setback, so I guess those are my only comments. Is there any other questions for the applicant?
So just to clarify, if you can go back, Jen, I think two slides, about a third slide there. So when you said you're going to take care of and eliminate some of the impervious, you're talking about removing this particular stoop area, which would be called the north side of the corner, and that would be remaining?
No.
That's part of that zero?
No, I wish I had a picture of it instead, and I think we can go back to it, if we can go back to the original top and middle on the, like, number two, slide two, or three?
He's actually, so that's the square footage of the keys.
Keep going.
There you go.
So, there you go, so the right side, the right side, the bottom right, you can see how it just lays out.
Sure.
That's what we're removing, and you can also see the bump outs on the deck on the east side, and it kind of bumps out on the top, comes back in, goes back out, and then as you turn the corner, it bumps out. So we're going to be removing that piece of it to even make it a little less close to the lake. We're talking inches, I mean, it's not like significant, but we're, that's what we're doing to remove the impervious surface to net zero with the extension.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I know you mentioned cables to have a less, and I'm assuming there's going to be glass as well for safety?
That's not the plan. It would be stainless steel cables with, you know, based on code requirements, so they'd have a certain distance. I can't tell you exactly what it is, but three inches or two inches, whatever it happens to be, to be within the code, it will be safe, that no one will be sneaking through.
Okay.
Anybody else, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Discussion amongst commissioners, again, kind of, to me, it's not going any closer to the neighbor in either instance, not going any closer to the lake, seems reasonable to me, but I don't know what anybody else has thought.
I tend to agree, it seems very reasonable.
Yeah, if he had come here and said, "I want to, you know, add 1,000 square foot closer to the lake," it's a different story.
Right, it's a different story. I think it's quite aesthetically pleasing, to be honest with you.
And there's a, there's a door going out to nowhere right now.
Right.
Yeah. So, all right, any other discussion?
For a variance, do we, can we make the decision on the same meeting, or do we need to?
We can. At this time, I would open up to the audience, would anybody like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? I don't know, I think this is kind of straightforward, or we maybe could act on it tonight if anyone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
As presented.
We have a motion to approve the variance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the clarity and the detail. It was really helpful to have the drawings and the pictures, which was very well done.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2050 Plan Amendment, N 4780 Bell School Road, parcel PET 360003, Jack Schaefer, Honey Creek Trust.
Hello, my name is Tony Zan from Clinical Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Honey Creek Trust, Jack Schaefer. Jack has a property, do you have the?
I don't.
Oh, that's fine, everybody's got a packet. Jack owns property off of Bell School Road, roughly 236 acres in East Troy, and then another 87 acres to the east in the town of Waterford. He's got an existing home site, it's his residence on the property. Within your packet of materials that we provided, I included a kind of an overall map. So you see on the property, the existing residence, due south of that residence is a, is a recreational pond. We're here today to basically ask for a comp plan amendment. The property is 90 acres in size. What Jack would like to do is to, for planning, he's, his wife has passed, Jack is getting to an age where he's really into trying to figure out, you know, what his property is going to look like for his kids, and one of the things he wanted to do is create a lot around the house and the adjacent pond to the south. The property right now is 90 acres in size. It's a combination of zoning of A1, C1, C2, and C4. In the A1 zoning, you need 35 acres of A1 property, upland, A1 actually zoned property to create a lot. This 90-acre property has 67 acres of A1, so essentially, he can't do two lots on this 90 acres under the current A1 zoning. The only way that he could do the split is if he looked in, yeah, that's perfect. The only way that he could do the split is if he took, there's an existing C2 zoning that's over the north half of the house. If he extended the C2 zoning south of the house and over the pond, the C2 zoning's five acres, so you would have a 14-acre parcel for the house and the adjacent pond. The remnant of the property is roughly 76 acres, and that property would have 35 acres of A1 zoning. So I'm kind of jumping around comp plan and zoning, I'll kind of hopefully bring it all back around here. So ultimately, the next steps after, if this would be something that would be acceptable, is there would be a certified, the end game of this is a certified survey map on this 90-acre piece to create two lots, a 14-and-a-half-acre lot on the house and the pond, and then the, again, the 70, it would be 75.6 acres for the remnant piece. The only way to do the CSM is to do the rezone. The only way we can rezone is do the comp plan amendment. The comp plan, as you can kind of see on the screen, is it all right if I walk away from my microphone?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. As you can see on the screen, there's that little dot of AG2. So ultimately, for the comp plan request, we're just asking to extend that AG2, which is to the right of the, you see the big blue, bring the AG2 down to the south, correct, roughly nine acres, and then that would give him enough area to rezone that and do a lot. So that centerpiece would ultimately be two lots. We're converting some of the AP to AG2, so that's ultimately the request. So today is just the comp plan amendment, and then again, subject to the feedback we get, if it's, yes, it's something we can work with, it would be followed up by a rezone and CSM, as long as we get through the county also.
So my initial concern, and I know it's probably a little bit ahead, is I'd like to see, you know, existing proposed.
Okay.
You know, you're kind of telling us, "Oh, do this, do this, do this," but I'm not seeing it.
Okay.
And you, I mean, you're the expert, you know, we've worked together.
Sure.
If this is too early to be asking for that, I mean, I guess A1 is kind of, we don't like to get rid of any A1. As a general, now, the remaining piece will still be, you know, 75 acres or whatever of A1. For me, and I don't want to speak to everybody else, I guess I'd like to see, you know, here's, here's what we got, this is the zoning, you know, visually.
Okay. Can you, do you have this in the agenda packet that you could call up on the screen? So this is the one that's in your packet, parcel, the big one. So, I don't know, it's easy, but if you take the large one, there's a big kind of, I'll let you get yours. So there's kind of a big bold black line that's signifying the area that we're asking for the comp plan amendment. That piece would be the southern portion of the lot that's around the house, and I know it's hard to see, but if you go up to the, what would be the upper-left corner where there's an L1 and an L2, if you continue to go north, and it's, I apologize, it's, now I'm looking at it shaded pretty light, but there's a blue dash line, and it says proposed property line. If you continue to go up, and then it'll hit, and it'll go, it'll go due east, under the word, it says currently zoned C2 in blue, just due south of that, there's a black dash line that says proposed property line. That would come over to, it'll hit a solid black line, go due south, then go due east, and then come back south again, there's a black dash line that says proposed property line. So essentially, that would be the 14.6 acre property when it's all said and done, and I can come over if it, if I need to.
So right now is one, tax key one property?
190 acre property.
You, you don't have a problem splitting off half the house?
Well, yeah, great, great point. The split, the line that goes through the house, isn't a property line, that's the land use line and zoning line, so it's not a property line. So what we're saying is, hey, the comp plan here, this AG2 that's in red, we're just asking to bring it and cover the bold black line. That allows us to, we would come back for a rezone, and we'd be able to rezone this entire property to C2, which is also what?
C2 from A1?
C2 from A1. And our thought process on that is, A1's an egg, you know, 35 acre, right? Well, it's a, the prime egg is the land use, the A1 is the zoning.
Fair.
In our case, he's already has a house, he already has a pond, he's already maintaining a grass, brass around it.
He's not farming.
Essentially, a residential lot with all the farm, the rest of it has got, you know, farming and other ponds and whatnot. When you go to, so that's kind of the zoning part of it. The land use part of it, I did include a soils map, that's a soil capability class. It doesn't, may not mean much, but I listed the soils and the numbers on the soils. One is considered like, the best for farming, and as the number goes down, it goes from one to eight. So eight's kind of like, yeah, it's a soil, but it's not the best. So if you look at, if you look at here, the three soils that are within the area that I'm asking about are the MXD2 and the MXC2, and you'll see those are, kind of categorizes fours and sixes. One is the best, A is the worst. So even for like, prime egg land, I would argue, yeah, it's not number one, it's, you know, not the best for the soil class. So those, between the way the property is currently being used, you know, what we have for soils, we're not asking for a subdivision, we're not asking for even a road in 10 lots, we're just asking for one lot, you know, to create two lots out of one.
I do have a quick question on that. Your, your initial discussion was to increase this to, I believe it's 14 point some acres? What was the end result?
Yeah, the house lot would be 14.6, the number you see on the paper, 9.4, that's just the request for the land use area to be amended, and the lot itself would be 14.6.
And briefly reviewing the literature of your explanation, the remaining acreage then would be proposed to go back to A1?
It is A1, I would, we would not ask to rezone the rest of the property.
You have an adjacent property from your proposed property line that is currently zoned C2.
Yeah, so.
Were you looking at possibly trying to amend that and make that, so you potentially would make this lot an adjacent lot, and under C2, you could build a house here, because it's more than five acres with this, or is this going to be encompassed in your other?
Correct. Yeah, so the whole purpose is to create a 14.6 acre lot over the house and the pond. The other 76, we're not asking for any land use change, we're not asking for any rezone of that. The rest of the property is, you can kind of go around, it's A1, it's, you know, A1, C2, A1, it's kind of a combination of different zoning. So we, the rest of the parcel, we don't want, we're not asking for anything on the other 76 acres.
But you've got to understand my question.
Yeah, so somebody could come back and say.
Three years from now, you could come back and say, okay, well, but I got a C2 over here encompassed within the A1 that you already presented as 70 some acres is going to remain as A1. is going to remain as A1. And now I want to put a residence here, I want to have access and put a residence here, because I'm allowed to do so, maybe even two. There was some reference about, even if they would develop it in the future, we would use the existing access roadway that currently exists on the property. You can see some of my hesitation to why are we taking away prime acre agricultural land and then have these potential conversations in the future?
Understood, yep. Uh, great point about the road, so that he's, the existing driveway comes off of Bella School. Kind of comes up along the south line, then it appears, and this, it goes here. And then this comes around, and it comes into here. So essentially, again, not looking to add more driveway, not acting, asking to add more impervious, there would be an access easement over that. So again, now we're kind of getting to the CSM part of it, but you, yeah, I understand why you need the vision of what it would be to make the decision for this. It would essentially be an access easement to this parcel. This parcel would be basically, you know, wouldn't have public access. It would be an isolated piece.
Stranded, yeah.
But you would have the access easement to it over the existing drive. To your point, if you guys, if it was tonight, it was, no, we don't want to do that. You're right, the C2, you could, as long as it's five acres in size, if I have five acres of C2, I could create a lot over it. I have not, we, that's not his desire, so I haven't looked at, hey, this is ten acres, I could do one lot, two lots. This is still thirty-five acres of A1, so that could be a third lot. I have not done that, but kind of getting, you probably could do three lots today with the way it's zoned, and though we're not looking to do that.
So, and I'm not trying to make work for you, I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse. I'm not looking for like a full CSM type. Just, again, I, I, I know, I was confused, confused maybe not the right word. On paper, like you're saying, but on paper, I don't know exactly what you're asking for. Kind of, I mean, I do, but I don't. I think if, if, anybody else jump in, if, if you could maybe clarify a little bit better, like, you know, proposed, you know, existing zoning, this will remain. I, I think that would go a long way and we could, you know, maybe come back in two weeks and make a decision. Again, I don't want to jump on anybody else, though.
Is this, is this basically what you're asking? Is just proposing the nine point four acres from AP to AG2?
Correct, so this, again, this dark area within this.
The dark black, right?
Dark black, that's the land use request. That's the land use from AP to AG2. The AG2 is just extending the current AG2 that's here. Yep. So the land use side, we're asking to change this from the dark circle from AP to AG2. That would take care of the land use plan. Then we have to go to the county, make sure they're okay with it. If they say yes, then we would come back to you guys and say, hey, now we're asking to rezone that area that you just changed.
Sure.
I can't rezone the C2, I can't rezone AP to C2. So that's why I'm really asking to change it.
So, so I might be jumping the gun a little bit, and I know Rich, you're always the one that keeps me in line there, because I, so, ma- maybe I'm backpedaling a little bit, because i- if this is more of a, you know, changing the land use plan?
Well, I think you're, those are legit questions, because it's like, why am I, what's the end game?
Right, right.
My end game is to come back, I have to get you guys first, and then I go to the county. If the county agrees, then my land use plan is changed. That area that's in the black circle is now AG2. Then I can come back and say, okay, I want to rezone from A1 to C2. And then you're going to look at the land use plan and say, yep, I can have a C2 zoning in an AG2 land use category. So at that point, then you, if you say yes, then I would propose the CSM that we just described.
I think it would be helpful if we knew precisely what the plan amendment proposal is. I, I don't see that clearly, because that's step one in this process.
This is what you're proposing to revise in the comprehensive plan, right? Which would be step one.
This black line right here, this is what we're asking to revise from AP to AG2.
Just kind of really.
For the comp.
So, yeah, so not making, not asking for a zoning change, just.
Just the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan.
And can I ask for a zoning change with the current?
Understood.
Okay, all right. I'd love to do everything I want.
So, so I guess, if, you know, if we were to say yes to this tonight, that doesn't mean he's full speed ahead. He has to come back with, to us with that zoning change and then with a CSM again, right?
Yeah.
With sort of approval from the county.
Correct, correct.
Great point, too. I could leave here, go to the county, and the county says no.
I think our concern initially is that, you know, we don't want to say yes, and all of a sudden, we just decided that's no longer A1, but you're not asking for a zoning change.
And I can't ask for a zoning change.
And I would feel more comfortable if there's clearly a textual clarification of what you were planning.
They, I did a project narrative, you guys get it?
Yeah, I got the project.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just ask with the timing, because county only sees these requests once a year. If we don't get this approved by the town board until September, will we make that final?
I, I, I won't. And unfortunately, as she said, the county allows one swing at this a year.
Yep.
So we asked if we could, actually, we asked if I could be in front of you guys in September. And she responded, the county lady responded and said, she needs all of her paperwork by September 4th.
Right.
I'm just saying that, I'm not rushing, I'm not, I'm just saying that's the, the card we were dealt.
Understood.
So that's why I'm here tonight.
Sure. Any other questions for the applicant?
I know there's a lot of paperwork, certainly, you know, as far as the proposed lot, you know, and I can just, go ahead.
Well, my one question is, so around this pond here, you know, we're talking about how part of his dwelling is in this area that you want to change in the comprehensive plan, but is this cut for hay or anything? Is this being used semi-agriculturally at all, or is this cut?
That's cut.
Just lawn?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's all lawn around the pond?
Correct. Chances are it'll never be agricultural.
And this is the, again, and I apologize for this layer line, but the property is the dark black. This would be the proposed CSM. We come up this line right here, we come across right here, 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 and then you'd be back. This piece is fourteen point six acres. Access would be through this.
Correct.
Access easement.
So we got, we kind of, Rich, kind of do have the end game sort of, I mean, not with, not with CSM detail, of course, but we still obviously have another crack at it, if you will.
Right. All he's asking for is.
Is there, is there any other questions of the applicant? All right, thanks. I'm not necessarily, I don't really care if, if there's deadlines, kind of. But again, kind of seems reasonable to take this first step.
Yeah, I'm okay with the first step, I think.
Because he's got to come back to us.
Correct, with, with the details that I was looking for, like, you know, you know, what, what are we splitting off, what zoning is it, you know? But he's not asking for that tonight.
Because he can't, he can't do it to this.
So, real quick, Tony, if I could jump back and ask you a question? What is the acreage that you're asking for to be removed out of the?
Nine point four from, I think it's on that big time right here. Nine point four from AP to AG2.
Okay, I missed that, no.
So it's not, like, when you talk zoning, you'll never rezone something and create a spot zoning, right? But on the land use side of things, there's clumps, because INRA goes with wooded areas, you know? SW goes with pond areas, so you'll see isolated land use plans. Even in this case, I'm asking to extend an AG2 that already exists.
Already exists.
Or half the, you know, I guess, you could probably even go back to when they, they do these land use plans updates every twenty years, I think it is. You know, and it's, they're doing it generally of the whole community wide. I think if they were to really focus on this property, the AG2 probably would have come further south to cover the house, because why is half the house?
That's the weird, that's a weird thing, that the house is half C2 and half A1.
Right, and then when we come to the zoning, again, I'm not asking, I'm not spot zoning this property, saying, hey, give me something funky to allow me to do this. I'm, I, I would be asking to extend the C2 to the south, again, just expanding the C2 over a residential.
Sure, okay.
Reason.
Sure. All right, thanks.
So, based on that information and knowing that these are essentially general maps for the next twenty-five years to, to look forward to, you know, what do we see each joint to be like?
Right.
Knowing that we have layers of, it has to go to the county, and they may have very, very more restrictive opinions than we do.
Right.
Not knowing, because of the revisits in the state statute says you have to show undue hardship to be able to change something from the master use plan. I think we have multiple layers of protection, not to mention another revisit before we would change the zoning that Mr. Tony's asking for.
Right.
Um, so I agree with you that though we should never be bound to a timeline, but with the extremely circumstances that people meet once a year, I think it would be prudent to at least give them the opportunity to have the future conversations.
Sure.
And revisit, there's, there's multiple layers to the onion before discussion.
Yep. Other discussion amongst commissioners? All right, I would open it up to the audience, would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Yeah, I guess, I couldn't, couldn't have said it better myself, so. Would anybody like to make a proposal or a motion?
Can I just have one more point? We talked about the A1 zoning, minimum of thirty-five acres. So I was in my head, when I saw that, like thirty-five and thirty-five, now it's like fifteen and seventy, or fourteen and seventy-six, right? Because the, we're going to have more A1 than thirty-five acres, right?
Correct, so the whole property is ninety plus.
Right.
So, don't quote me on the numbers, but the remaining A1 will still be seventy-five.
Right.
Double compliant with A1.
Yeah, so, so again, there's a lot of numbers. The entire property is ninety acres.
Right.
That ninety, sixty-seven of it is A1. So, but in A1 zoning, it has to have thirty-five acres of A1 zoned property. So since I only have sixty-seven, I can't divide this lot in any manner and have two lots that have thirty-five acres of A1 zoning. Now, Commissioner Nielsen brought up a thing about the C2 that's different, because I only need five acres. So the long and short of it is, yes, the residential lot will be fourteen point six acres in a C, this is future. If you, C2's rezoning, granted, it's five acre lot size, I would have a fourteen point six acre lot size. All the remnant property would be the second lot, that's seventy-five point six acres. And I would have roughly.
A1.
Yeah, I'd have like sixty acres of A1, ten acres of C2.
Yeah.
Some acres of INRA and then the SW pond.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Then, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that we approve the comprehensive plan for parcel number PET360003.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We will stand in three months.
Sounds good. All right, next item on the agenda is a variance. N9114 Oakwood Lane, parcel POP00010. Hey, is that supposed to be James? James Hubert?
Good evening, my name is Michael, and your team, I'm with Deepwater Partners and we've got an architect on the project, who would be requesting a variance for the demolition and partial reconstruction of an existing boathouse and patio located within the shoreyard setback. That is property located at North 9114 Oakwood Lane. The proposed work includes demolition of the existing boathouse and patio, both located within the shoreyard setback. Reconstruction of approximately half of the existing boathouse footprint, maintaining its existing location to the southeast property line. And construction of a smaller patio atop the portion of the original boathouse footprint that we are not building back, rather than its former location in the yard. The reason for this variance request is due to ambiguity in R1 residential shoreline district zoning guidelines. While the guidelines prohibit patios and shoreyards, they do not specifically address rebuilding back a patio in a newly built footprint in the boathouse. And the variance is necessary because we're proposing to rebuild the patio on a portion of that footprint. And this is considered a change of use, according to Walworth County. And patios are classified as prohibited structures in shoreyards due to their location within the seventy-five foot shoreyard setback and approximately to the shoreline. So we're proposing a carefully considered design that reduces the boathouse footprint, so we're reducing it from three hundred and ninety-six square feet to one hundred and ninety-eight square feet. The patio that we're rebuilding back is being reduced in size from two hundred and thirty-nine square feet to one hundred and eighty square feet. And the new patio will be constructed atop a portion of the boathouse footprint that's not being rebuilt. So we're then removing essentially eighty-eight square feet of impervious surface, which is made up of a slab, landscape pavers, and existing masonry walls. So then pervious surface area is reduced then by five hundred and fifty-nine square feet, which would essentially improve water management on the property. The site's view corridor will also be improved from fifty-five percent to thirty-six percent, maximizing visual ecological destruction. And we also note a couple other properties, North 9102, North 9110, North 9148, North 9152, and North 9162 Oakwood Lane, which all have boathouses that are currently positioned near the property line, in contrast to our existing boathouse, which is more centrally located within the property. And the proposed design maintains consistency with the character of the shoreline development in the area. So just to point out the footprint here, so the existing boathouse is a fully gray area here, and then there's existing concrete patio to the north, and then there's a smaller patio to the south. So what we're essentially asking to do is to tear down the existing boathouse, build back half of it, but only the portion that's to the southeast, and then take what was the existing patio and rebuild it adjacent to the portion that is not being rebuilt.
Let's go down to the next page, that's proposed.
Yep, so the lower black box is the new portion, the proposed patio, so you can see that dash line, that's existing footprint of the, the boathouse and then the patio to the, the north, which we would remove. So for our variance, three step test, one, we have unique property limitations. The current boathouse and patio extend into the center of the property, where neighboring boathouses are kept along the property line, maintaining a larger view corridor. So our intent is to open up that view corridor by removing the existing boathouse and building it back smaller, but set off to the side of the property line. So granting the variance would support a more balanced and consistent shoreline development approach with open central view corridor, similar to the neighboring properties. The unnecessary hardship is the strict enforcement of the ordinance, which would present unnecessary burdensome restrictions, because we would be allowed to maintain the existing patio location while reducing the size of the boathouse. However, we're simply just asking to shift over the patio onto the area of the boathouse that we're not rebuilding. And there's no harm to the public interest. The proposed development would maintain the existing west side setback of the boathouse and therefore not harm any neighboring properties. It would reduce the amount of impervious surface area and therefore improve. it would reduce the amount of impervious surface area, and therefore improve site drainage, there's no detriment to any adjacent properties, the community, or the general public, granting the variance would create a new space within the shoreyard setback, and therefore maintain the spirit of the zoning ordinance.
All right, thanks. Any questions of the applicant? All right, thanks. To me, they're taking a bigger boathouse, not going any closer to the water, not going any closer to their neighbor, making it smaller, and making a smaller patio. It's already there, they're improving it, making it smaller, that's my take on it. Another comment?
Yeah, just, the various requests is centered around the boathouse and the patio, not the garage or the other things that are being changed.
And the concrete on the north side of the existing and the south side will be removed?
Correct.
My understanding is the boathouse then would come to the edge of that existing concrete on the south?
Yeah, so we, we have a patio there, we just want to move it over, and what we were getting from all the counties saying that we're changing the use, but our argument is we already have a patio there, we just want to move it over.
Yep.
Shrink it.
Shrink it.
Right.
Kind of a neat question, what, what's the amount of impervious layer on the lot?
I don't know, the impervious is getting less with this proposal?
It, it is, and, and I like the fact that it is getting less, I'm just, I reviewed everything, and I didn't catch this till right now, that you're actually tearing down this residence, building a new residence, making a concrete driveway, concrete patio, currently it's all gravel and a smaller footprint, and that's where I'm just curious of, even though they're reducing the existing boathouse footprint, is it possible with this proposal that was not reviewed before, because it's outside the 75 foot setback, that now the impervious layer is, is actually increasing overall, which isn't our jurisdiction to discuss, this is just me speaking out loud.
Right.
The proposal that was presented to us is to reduce impervious layers, whoever approved this plan before, you know, is on them, if they would not do anything, certainly impervious layer would increase more.
Right.
That was just my, my initial review that I didn't quite see before, but no, it's, I think it's aesthetics wise, I think it's going to help line of sights for someone that's on, on the lake, we like to minimize some of those structures, especially if it's been there a while, and I did take a drive down there to, to see some, something that's new.
It, it's not often that someone comes to us and asks for a subtraction.
Isn't that the truth? Isn't that the truth? A question, quick question for you, is your proposed patio going to be brick pavers, or is that going to be a concrete slab?
We are proposing as.
Any other discussion amongst commissioners? All right, I would open it up to the audience, would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of their proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? To me, this seems very reasonable, and I think we could act on it, if anybody would want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal as presented to us for parcel number POP00010.
We have a motion to approve the variance, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business amongst commissioners? Any other public comment? Then I would take a motion to adjourn.
I would vote to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.